Well, thank you, everybody that has been tuning in. This is great participation for an online Zoom forum for school board. Looking forward to a great discussion. My name's Taylor Shelton. For those that I haven't met, I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Sustainability for the Fayetteville Chamber of Commerce. I'll be conducting tonight's forum and moderating for our two candidates. We have two 30-minute sections where we're going to do, essentially, we have a list of questions that we'll ask of each zone candidate. We're going to do the Zone One and then at-large. I believe I had that right, correct? Zone One first, yeah, all right. So we will go ahead and conduct the introductions here in just a moment. Before we get beginning, we get started on things. I do want to thank ATT, Black Hills Energy, and Ozarks Electric for continuing to sponsor these forums. We've had to do a lot of pivoting because of COVID, and they've maintained their support of the forums throughout the whole pandemic. We've done a number of online Zoom forums now, and we've had some great participation. It's interesting getting to see how we kind of create a more of a hybrid model. So going forward, we'll get to use the Fayetteville Public Library again and then still continue to stream these, which we've gained a lot of participation and a lot of viewers just by our YouTube views alone. And so, thank you, everybody, for that has been tuning in and sharing these as we put them out. We're looking forward to tonight's discussion. We have a format set up. First, we have, usually it's one hour long. We're going to break it up into two 30-minute sections. Each candidate will have a five-minute opening and a three-minute closing statement. Candidates will speak in alphabetical order for the opening statement, and then they'll reverse order for each of the questions. Each candidate will have three minutes to respond to each question, and there will be no rebuttal after the responses. The first to answer each question will alternate between the candidates. I do keep time, so I will be audibly letting you know when your time is up and when you have 30 seconds remaining on your statement. Make sure I go ahead and get that pulled up now for y'all. The rules for the format. Only candidates may respond to questions. The audience is asked to refrain from interrupting responses or causing any kind of distractions in the chat. Please keep it respectful. Audience, back and forth comment. Oh, this is a little bit more for in-person. But please, if you are engaging in the chat to ask questions, please frame your question, so each candidate may answer. We don't like any kind of pointed questions, and we need each candidate to be able to answer each question equally. We will begin with opening statements. Once we, can I go ahead and get a mic check from our two candidates?
Yes.
Hello.
Hello, awesome, perfect. All right, we will start with you, Ms. Smith.
Hello, my name's Miriam Smith, and I'm a candidate for the Zone One Board position in our Fayetteville Public School District. I've lived in Fayetteville almost 30 years. My husband Randy and I have two sons that are currently both in the Fayetteville Public School District, one at Woodland Junior High and the other one at Fayetteville High School. I grew up in eastern Arkansas in a rural community, and my parents, they were pretty amazing because they taught me early on the value of education as well as community service. And they told me no one would ever give me anything in life but an opportunity, and so I took that to heart. And when I graduated from high school, I came to Fayetteville and attended the University of Arkansas, received a bachelor's degree in 1985. I love food, so my bachelor's degree is actually in Home Economics Education with an emphasis in food and nutrition. I immediately started my MBA after completing my bachelor's degree. And the idea was to combine my undergraduate with a graduate degree and work in marketing for a food company. You know what they say about the best-laid plans, they don't always happen. So after graduating with my MBA, I had, as my first job, along the Delta in Arkansas, teaching high school home economics. And most of my students came from a very low socioeconomic background. It was a very diverse setting, and I think that's probably where I developed my passion for helping children. And as much as I enjoyed being there for almost two years, it was still my ambition to enter the business world. So I received an opportunity to move to Memphis, Tennessee, and go to work for an advertising and marketing firm. I spent five years at this firm, working on a variety of accounts, from Tennessee Tourism to First Tennessee Bank. We also had a satellite office in Little Rock, and after about two and a half years of being on the account service side there in Memphis, I was promoted as Vice President to manage our office in Little Rock. One of the best things that the agency taught me was how to develop strategic plans and execute those. And so for five years, that's what I did. Being on the account service side, you're pretty much the liaison between the client and all the arms of the agency. So we had budgets to meet, multimillion-dollar budgets with these accounts, and we were only as good as our last job. So after about five years of working for this agency, I was given an opportunity in Fayetteville to move back here and to go to work for Blackwood Martin and Associates. This agency handled Tyson Foods as well as a division at Eminem Bars, another food company, Uncle Ben's Fries. And I started out in account management, again, working as the liaison between the client and all the arms of the agency before being promoted to Vice President over all of our account services. And it has really, had really taught me a lot about being a team player for 16 years of advertising and marketing. It's really important to have goals and to work as a team, both on the client's side and within the agency, to make sure that our client's money was spent wisely and that we had a return on investment for each and every project or plan that we put in place. After 10 years with Blackwood Martin, my husband and I, we decided at an older age that it was time to start a family. So we were blessed to have two sons shortly after I retired from the business world. And after that, I just pretty much poured all my passion and my energy into Fayetteville Public Schools. I love our public school system. For 11 years, that's what I've done, is get to know parents in this zone and to also work closely with each of the PTOs in a variety of ways. I served in Vandergriff on a variety of committees, hospitality, but also with our tailgate fundraising events.
30 seconds remain.
Okay, and then when I went to McNair, I served as McNair's PTO President and managed a lot of fundraising efforts that poured back into teacher grants as well as an outdoor classroom. And now I currently serve at Woodland Junior High School and Fayetteville High School on their PTO boards. So it's been a really exciting time. I have a variety of board experiences, from Big Brothers, Big Sisters, to the Fayetteville Community Foundation that I've served on as well. But I think there's a question later on that I can get into that. But it's been a, just a great experience to be back here in Fayetteville.
Thank you. We will now go to introductions from our next candidate, Ms. Nika Waitsman.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Taylor. Nika Waitsman, I'm the President of the Fayetteville Public Schools Board of Education. And I have three FHS graduates that have, my youngest one just graduated last year, but I have one that graduated in 2013, and he went on to work in Denver. He's an engineer, went and played basketball at the Colorado School of Mines and stayed out there. My daughter Fay graduated in 2017 and is at the University of Wyoming, where she plays volleyball. And then I have Whitney, who graduated last year, and she's at Oklahoma State University. But I grew up in Boulder, Colorado, and attended public schools there. And then I went to the University of North Carolina in Chapel Hill, where I graduated in 1989, turned my age, with a degree in Business Administration. And then went into a career in nonprofit, where I worked primarily for the YMCA in fundraising and public relations. And I learned a lot during those early years about program development and sustainability and just the world of nonprofit, which is primarily volunteer-driven, as many of you realize. And then we moved around a little bit to Cincinnati for a while, and then here to Arkansas in 1998. And so we have, I've been a volunteer in the school district for the last 20 years. My son is 26, so have her along, I guess, when he started kindergarten. And filled different roles in this school district, serving as PTA President at a couple of different schools, won the Dorothy Lindquist Award that we honored Kathy Wade with just last week, way back in 2013, which was a great honor. In 2015, I was appointed to the Board of Education to fill a vacancy. I applied and was selected from a pool of applicants during that year. And then at the end of that year, I ran for reelection in 2016 and won that election to represent Zone One, which is essentially is northeast Fayetteville, even those lines are a little wiggly. And school board positions are five-year positions. They're nonpartisan positions for good reason because the decisions we make are not political in nature, they're just school-based. So, but I've currently also pursuing my master's degree at the University of Arkansas Clinton School of Public Service. And the focus of my study there has been on the transition of children out of foster care, so transition age children aging out of care, which has just been a passion of mine since I became a CASA a few years ago and have navigated the juvenile courts with 11 different children. A couple of them have aged out, and that has developed my interest in understanding because so many of them end up in the homeless population or really struggling in life in general. So those are, those are kind of my passions, and that's what I spend my time on right now. Thanks, Taylor.
Thank you. We will now go to our first question, and we'll stay on you, Nika, for the first question. And that is, why did you decide to run for, in this case, reelection?
Yep, okay, thanks. Well, I have loved what I do. First of all, I love this work with the Board of Ed. I feel that my skills and abilities have proven to be well-suited for this role, and I feel like that's why my fellow board members chose me as their president in March of 2020, which was interesting timing. But during this past year as president, I've navigated pandemic. We've had some concerns that we had to work through with the city about racial inequities in our disciplinary action. We've also been investing $114 million into our facilities. So I just feel like I am fully invested in the progress that we're making, and we're at a critical time with our schools nationally, worldwide. And I just feel strongly about the stability that I can provide, having walked through what we've been through this past year in particular, but also the four years leading up to it. It's required a significant investment of time. It has brought about incredible personal growth and commitment on my part, just having walked through some of that stuff. It's board service, and I've said this before in other forums, it's a steep learning curve. It takes a lot of time for any new board member, including me, when I was new, to fully grasp the processes and procedures of board work. It requires a lot of training. And it's the type of leadership that benefits from influence. It's not something where you can just walk in and make decisions. You have to develop influence, which is not something that's handed to you. It requires work, and it requires experience. But it's what makes the difference in board leadership. And after five years of learning to navigate this role, I feel I have gained quite a bit of influence in our district. And I also feel like, you know, one thing that's important to understand about board work, even though we're representing particular zones, our decisions that we make, the issues, the policies that we discuss, affect the entire district. So it's important for board members to think broadly and openly. And I think that's just something that comes naturally to me because I have an interest in understanding a variety of different perspectives.
30 seconds.
And, and I just think I have, because of that interest in understanding different perspectives, I've developed a willingness to work together and collaborate with board members, administrators, parents, teachers, and whatnot. So that's why I want to continue in this role. Thanks.
Thank you. We will now go to opening statements from, or first question to you, Miriam. Why did you decide to run for this position?
Okay, thanks, Taylor. There's actually a variety of reasons that I chose to run this year for school board position. The first one goes back to just how I was raised, the value of education, and also the idea that community service, whatever community you live in, just the importance of giving back. And so that would be one reason. A second reason would be just simply a variety of people over the past few years have asked me, why don't you run for school board? You've got an education that is relevant. You have 16 years of career experience dealing with marketing plans and strategy, not only in developing them, but executing them. You've been a high school teacher, so you understand the day in, day out of what a teacher does, whether it's a daily lesson plan or simply working as a team to choose curriculum and get that feedback to administration, excuse me, administrators, who then take your feedback and help make that decision happen. And also just my passion for kids. All those things came into play. And probably the tipping point was this past year, starting in September of 2020. I mentioned earlier, I serve on the FHS PTSO Board, and our principal there reported that, and certainly this is a very unusual year, but he reported that 56% of our high school students in September of 2020 had at least one failing grade. Then by November, that number had been reduced to 39%. And then by February of this year, 2021, it was down to 27%. And in, on a, in a normal year before COVID, the average of our high school students having at least one failing grade would only be 10%. And so I just looked at that, and I started researching numbers as far as where we stand in the state of Arkansas, which Arkansas is not typically among the top 10 in the nation when it comes to rankings for public school education. And I saw more numbers from the Public School Review that showed our reading and math proficiency scores in the Fayetteville Public School District for
30 seconds remain.
Last year. Out of 262 school districts, we ranked number 22. And I really want to see Fayetteville Public Schools number one in the state. And so it was really a collection of all these things that brought me to the decision on the first of March to decide to run for school board. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We will, we'll stay on you for the next question now. Describe your experience working with the community of Fayetteville. What is your leadership style?
Since I moved here in probably 1994, I was, I've been asked to serve on a variety of boards. I think I mentioned earlier in my opening statement, I was asked to serve, when I first moved here, on the Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Northwest Arkansas Board. And that was the original board that launched that program here in Northwest Arkansas, great group of community leaders. Then in 2003, I was part of the board that launched the Fayetteville, goodness, Community Foundation, too many boards here. But, and, and that, again, philanthropic group of people that want to give back to Fayetteville and to the state of Arkansas. And then most recently, I've served for the past 11 years on the Board of Restore Humanity, which a local girl, Sarah Fennel Buchanan, started as a nonprofit. It's pretty much based here. But we service a children's home in Kenya and provide those children with a safe environment as well as an education. We even have a Restore Humanity Scholars Program and are pleased to have two of our students here at the University of Arkansas in Fayetteville. So I would say that my involvement has been directly in these areas on the boards, just working with great community leaders to give back to education and to kids in this community. And I guess the bottom line is really this. For my 16 years of experience in advertising and marketing, I've always been a team player. I don't make a decision without having all the facts and different variables about a situation in front of me. And just the fiscal responsibility of the decisions you make on boards, you have to be able to have a return on the investment that you get, regardless of what it is. And so all of these boards have strengthened my relationships across the community, not just in Zone One, but in the district as a whole. Also, just through PTO, the generosity of this community to these teachers and the students and their desire to support our programs and our schools is phenomenal. I really don't remember anybody telling me no. If we needed, if we needed, if we needed a donation from banks to help build out our drama department at McNair and provide a new curtain and a sound system, they were the very first to write a check. And so I'm just really blown away by the generosity of the community that we live in here in Fayetteville.
Thank you. Ms. Waitsman, we'll now go to you. The question was to describe your experience working with the community of Fayetteville, and what is your leadership style?
So I, a lot of my experience with the community that's been more direct has been recently as a board member. But previous, prior to serving as a board member, I directed the Fayetteville community, the Fayetteville branch of the Community Kids Closet, which some of you may or may not be familiar with, which provides clothing and shoes to children in our public schools in need of those things. I also serve as a CASA in Washington County, so I'm involved, very involved with the foster care community here in Washington County and in the juvenile courts. And then, of course, through our schools. But recently, as a board member, we have, we've had some really interesting conversations taking place with the city in particular because of our, because of the investment of the money that we're building a new school on the west side of town. But as a new board member, I don't think I had a full appreciation for how diverse this community is and how many different perspectives, how many different priorities there are within this community. And I have learned what an incredible strength that is for this community. And I feel like I've, I've gained a huge new appreciation for the importance of evaluating all those different viewpoints and how that just makes a better-informed final product, a better-informed decision. But we have, we have been collaborating with the city on the construction of our new school, the location of our new school, the placement of it on the site. We also had conversations this past summer with regard to school safety and security. We've, that was a, that was a really important conversation that we had with the city. We've also, you know, worked through event scheduling, parking at the high school issues, a lot of things that we've, we've had to work through some collaboration with the city. But we're currently investing $114 million in facilities all over town, including the new school, but also the, you know, renovation of the properties near the high school, which we're doing without increasing any taxes. So we consider that to be something in the best interest of our community. But in terms of, okay, leadership style, I would say my leadership style is focused on relationships. I mentioned earlier, I lead through influence, and I found that approach to be much more effective than other types of leadership because it creates opportunities for dialogue and for real change. Because change is the crux, is the goal of any type of leadership. And if we're moving, if we're prioritizing relationships and getting to know one another, I think that's the best way to do that. So that's how I'd describe my leadership style. Thanks, Taylor.
Yes, thank you. And we'll stay on you for this next question. What do you believe to be the largest challenge facing the district in the next two years?
Well, I think that one's, that's kind of obvious. We're dealing with, we're emerging from a pandemic, and I'm going to keep using that word emerge because I don't think any of us want to be looking backwards. But I think the challenges that our schools are facing are significant. I think the data points that Miriam pointed out are frightening. I think all of us, as a district, are going to have to go all in to face some big challenges in our learning environment to ensure that, that our academics are both rigorous and responsive to the trauma that our students have experienced over the last year. And that's, that's a challenge. That's an incredible challenge because we need to be pushing our kids, but also being sensitive to what they, what they have faced. Both our high-achieving students and our struggling students, we have to be able to meet them where they are. The board is going to have to continue to set high expectations. We're going to have to prioritize. We're going to have to work together with our administration, with our community, and make sure that every single child is cared for in the way that they need to be cared for. But also alongside that, we're navigating this investment of money. We're getting ready to break ground, hopefully early summer, on a new school on the west side of town. And, but we have all these other projects underway. Every single building in our district is going to be touched. We have to spend that money in three years. We have to keep that ball rolling forward. This, this work has created hundreds of jobs for the Fayetteville community. It's, it's really important work that we are navigating, and it has required a lot of research on behalf of our board, our administration, to understand what to prioritize, what things we need to set aside. And I just, I feel like those are going to be the two concurrent challenges we face as a board over the next two years.
Thank you. We will now go back to you, Miriam, and I'll repeat the question for you. What do you believe to be the largest challenge facing the district in the next two years?
I would say that the largest challenge that we have most immediately is the beginning of our new school year and simply having a proactive plan that provides our teachers and our students and our administrators with the best possible start that we can have after all that we've been through. I believe one of the biggest challenges is the mental health aspect of this. Even our high-performing students, everybody suffered from this pandemic, which is nobody's fault. It's just the reality of where we are. So I think the biggest challenge is having a solid plan in place now, before school starts back, so that we can hit the ground running. And I would love, just in my conversations with different counselors, especially at the high school, it's really important to have people in place that can support these kids when, when they get back in school five days a week, or if they choose virtual, just having someone to talk through what they're experiencing, not just academically, but emotionally and mentally. And so I see that as one challenge. And just to dovetail into what Nika had talked about, I love that we're building new schools and updating schools. I think that's such a positive, to create an environment like that for our students to feel safe and, you know, just have new facilities or updated facilities. But I think that we need to be realistic about Northwest Arkansas and where we are headed. We want Fayetteville to grow as a community. And with growth, just like building a new middle school, we're going to have to put those kids somewhere eventually at the high school. And, you know, I think all of us want class sizes that are manageable for our teachers. So I would say just the fast pace of growth that our region is experiencing, it's not going to miss Fayetteville. So I'd like for us to, to be proactive and just work toward ideas now that, that help us best take care of our students as we move forward.
Thank you. So at this point, I'm going to, I'm going to squeeze in one more question before we get to closing statements, because I'd like to get to this question. So next question, we'll, we'll stay with you, Miriam. Where do you see the district after your term has ended? What are your personal goals? Where do you see the district after your term has ended? What are your personal goals?
Well, my goal is to, has always been in running for this position, to be a strong voice. I'm running for Zone One, so that is the group I represent, but but I do represent or would represent the district as a whole. So my goal would be to work collaboratively with the other board members in the community to ensure that Fayetteville Public Schools offers the number one education in the state. I mean, with the University of Arkansas here, we're the, we're the epicenter of education in the state. And I would love for us to partner with them and to just, you know, maximize what we have at our fingertips to give our kids the best academic experience possible. So I'm hoping if elected that that we would be either having achieved that goal or very close to having achieved that goal. And my, my personal goal is just to get back to this community and and do exactly what I said, make Fayetteville Public Schools number one. Excellence in education is my platform. My heart's with the kids and with the teachers. And that, that pretty much summarizes, I think, how I feel about my goals and where I want to see our district.
Thank you. Ms. Waitsman will now go to you. Same question. Where do you see the district after your term has ended? What are your personal goals?
Thank you, Taylor. Well, this, this is something that we have been, fortunately, as a district, we have really leaned forward on. We hired a demographer to study our growth a few years ago, and he continually gives us updates about what we need to plan for, and it has been such a great tool for us. We, in five years, we expect to have about twelve thousand students in the district. We currently have ten thousand. The, the reports he has prepared for us can, can identify exactly where that growth will be, at what ages. It has been such a helpful tool for us. Just for perspective, Springdale has twenty one thousand students and Bentonville has seventeen thousand students, so they're, they're quite a bit larger. But we're, we are, I agree, Miriam, we're, we're going to benefit from some of the regional growth as well. And we are leaning forward with that. We're, you know, preparing room for elementary school students because that's our most urgent need according to our demographic report. We will, probably at the end of five years, we will have need for growth at the secondary levels, and so we will have to be planning for that. Unfortunately, we are planning for that. So that's one great tool that we, as a board, have really prioritized, and it's been very instrumental in our, in our, in our conversations and just our plan overall. And then also, the strategic plan has identified some key priorities for the coming years. Some of those things include increased, we currently have two hundred students earning college credit. We have identified that as an area we want to see growth. We have thirty five hundred kids in our career and technical program. We've identified that as an area we want to, we want to see growth. We've prioritized increased enrollment for our underrepresented populations in AP courses, concurrent credit classes, CTE classes, fine arts clubs, because we, we realize that engagement, students who are engaged at school are more successful. We've worked on aligning our curriculum. You know, COVID threw a wrench in there, a humongous wrench in in that. And so we are talking about now providing support for our teachers to implement that curriculum and ways to make that successful because we're not only dealing with some new curriculum strategies, we're dealing with a a year like we've never seen before. So the board is prioritizing that alignment. I'd also like to see, and and this is something I've prioritized since I first came on the board, just increased opportunities to collaborate with the city and with the university. We have so many common goals. We have so many overlapping interests. And I think we, as a community, can benefit from increased collaboration. So that's just something that I continue to have as a personal goal. But yeah, I look forward to the next five years. I think we're, we're headed up and we're, and we're well situated to do that with our strategic plan and with our demographic report. Thank you.
Good deal. Thank you so much. And I know we're, we're bleeding over time a little bit, but we're still going to get to our closing statements. So, Nika, we'll go ahead and stay with you. And we'll give you three minutes to give any kind of closing statements you may have.
Okay, yeah, I don't need a full three minutes probably, but I just want to say this is, this is a really, really challenging time for our community. There are so many unknowns, so many challenges we're facing, combined with just frustration. People I feel are frustrated. There's some division in our community. I feel like the, the board is kind of in the middle of that because the school's where the kids are, and we just care so deeply about our children. And we need to be able to to think clearly, to navigate this from a place of collaboration. And I feel experience is going to be helpful in that process. All districts, all school districts are struggling, but we have set our course, like I mentioned in my previous comments. We have set high expectations and we have determined to do our very best. And I just believe the board will, will continue, will benefit from consistent, experienced leadership at this time. We haven't done everything perfectly. I don't think anyone has, nobody has known what that is. It's been a moving target. It's been a very challenging goal to achieve. But we've managed to keep every single business, building open for the entire pandemic. Not very many school districts across this country can boast about that. We kept our COVID numbers low. And we, we gave every, our entire staff a thousand dollar bonus as as a token of our gratitude, while they deserve more. We hope to be able to navigate raises once we figure out our budget. I'm just very, very proud of where we are as a district. And so I would ask for your vote of confidence in reelecting me to this position on May eighteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you so much for participating tonight. Really appreciate it. All righty, we will now go to closing statements from Ms. Smith.
Thank you, Taylor. I would agree with Nika totally. This has been just an incredible year and a half as far as what all of us have experienced with this pandemic. And I am so thankful to the teachers and everyone who make our schools run, whether you're a custodian, administrator, those, those folks who show up every day. That's, that's what it's about. They were willing to go and teach our children and to take care of our children and keep them safe. And I thank each and every one of them who were willing to do that. And all of those who have taught virtually and made the best out of that type of teaching environment says a lot about our district. I, as far as being voted in, I feel confident that my sixteen years of experience in the corporate world with developing and executing strategic plans would allow me to hit the ground running, so to speak. I'm confident in looking at budgets and evaluating them and making decisions that are often hard decisions. I haven't forgotten, even though I've been a full-time mom for several years now, I haven't forgotten all of those years of experience in the business world, as well as my continuation of being involved in boards, constantly evaluating budgets and making decisions that impact people's lives. I don't take those decisions lightly. And like I said earlier, I, I don't make decisions without the rest of my board or without, without all the facts in front of me. So I take it to heart if I were elected to serve on the school board in the Fayetteville Public School District. And I just appreciate your time today and the opportunity to share more about who I am and why I'm running and why I think I'm qualified to serve on the board. And obviously, I would appreciate anyone's vote in Zone One. It is a massive zone that goes all the way from Goshaun to Zion Road, and it's, know, know where your zone is. I have to admit, I've had conversations with, with parents in the district that they don't know where their zone is. So I think maybe we could, we can help with that a bit closer to the election, so everyone knows where Zone One is. But I thank you for your time, Taylor, and thank you, Nika, for, for the work that you've done over the past six years.
All righty, thank you so much. So at this point, we are going to go ahead and let our other two candidates get situated, get their video and stuff turned on. While, while we're taking a little break here, I have to comment on the amount of participation that we're getting in this forum. I think over forty five participants. Silent round of applause to everybody that's tuning in. I, we really appreciate everybody participating in this and hope you've enjoyed tonight's content. We will resume here in just a moment. I first have to thank our sponsors, of course. Without them, we couldn't have done this throughout the pandemic. And we're really looking forward to getting back to the Fayetteville Public Library, but in the interim, these Zoom forums have been really great, really informative, and we couldn't do this without them. So we have Ozark's Electric and Ozark's Go to thank for this, Black Hills Energy, and then AT&amp;T. So thank you so much to our sponsors for continuing to support these events, which, as you can see, we're getting a lot of participation in, so it must mean we're doing something right. So without further ado, we will go ahead and we'll skip the rules and format. We already went over those at the beginning, so we're going to go ahead and roll right into the introductions. Each candidate will have five minutes to give an introduction. From then on, we will have three minutes to respond to each question. I'm hoping to get through the same four questions that we did in the first forum. So we will begin with alphabetical Ms. Beasley.
Hi, hi, everyone. Thank you all for the participation today. It's great to see so many people engaged in school board elections. My name's Elizabeth Beasley. My husband and I have lived in Fayetteville for twenty five years. Our kids have attended Fayetteville Public Schools for fifteen years and counting. I have two recent graduates from Fayetteville High School and a current student that is a sophomore at FHS. We have loved living in Fayetteville and consider this home now after these twenty five years and plan to continue to stay here and make this our place of retirement. I am a child of a school teacher. My mom taught school for thirty years, and her last couple of years were here actually in Fayetteville at Holcomb Elementary under Dr. Colvert as principal. My children have attended, of course, elementary, middle, junior high, and high school, but we've also had an experience for a year in virtual academy, even before the pandemic, and a semester at Alps. So we have been able to experience a lot of different learning opportunities for students in Fayetteville. I have continued to be involved in the public school system through PTOs and booster clubs and also have owned my own small businesses in the community and been a part of several different congregations within our community and just feel so honored to be running for this position, this at-large position here in Fayetteville and take the experience that we have had as a family within this district and a family that has been so ingrained in this community and allow that to play out in serving on, potentially serving on the school board.
Thank you so much. We will now go to Ms. Hurley for her introduction. Thank you for joining us today.
Oh, my pleasure. My name is Megan Hurley, and I am the current Vice President of the Fayetteville Board of Education. I have two kids. Paddle is in fifth grade at Owl Creek and Gus is in third at Washington. I grew up outside of Philly and I attended public schools there in New Jersey from first through twelfth grade. I graduated magna cum laude in two thousand and one from Columbia University. And right after I graduated, I started teaching in the New York City Public Schools. I taught high school English there for four years until I moved to Fayetteville in two thousand and five. And I, after I moved here, I worked at the Public Library, which, as Taylor said, has gotten, was already beautiful and now got a facelift. And at I Bird Books. And then I began my master's in English Lit at the OVA. I taught at the OVA throughout graduate school. And then in two thousand and nine, I moved to Helena West Helena, where I taught high school English again. We moved back to Fayetteville in two thousand and twelve, and I opened a small business in December of two thousand and thirteen. Bar Three was in, still is, in northeast Fayetteville. And I sold that this past July. So I, I owned a small business here in Fayetteville for seven years. I was elected to the board in September of two thousand and sixteen, right as my oldest kiddo was finishing up kindergarten or starting, starting first grade. So I, I did not spend a lot of time serving on, on PTOs as my, as my, my fellow candidates here have. The, the bulk of my volunteer work with the schools, I, I did serve on the Framing Our Future Committee, but the bulk of my service in the, in the schools has been, has been on the board. It's a, it's been a great fit for my personality. And I, and I don't know, I, I feel like the taking my teaching experience and my small business ownership experience and my parenting experience and being able to kind of roll that, roll that together to learn more about schools, to learn more about Fayetteville schools and how our district runs and what the people of this community need and want, has just, has been a privilege. So I'm, I'm hoping that I get to continue. It's been really fun.
Thank you so much. We will stick with you for the first question, and that is, why did you decide to run for reelection?
I originally ran for the board because I'm passionate about public schools. I, my mom, like Elizabeth's, my mom taught public school for, for over thirty years. She taught high school. So I, I grew up in a house where that was true, and then I, I worked in the public schools. The mission of public schools is to be really like, like no other, like no other mission. I feel like it takes every single stakeholder in a community and asks us to get together where, where our kids and our tax dollars meet, which is a very sensitive spot for a lot of people. And, and I, I just, I feel like it's a place where all of the, whatever's challenging in the world kind of washes up on the beach of public school. And so, so solving those complex problems, listening to people, it's just, I, I believe in that mission. I was, I owned a fitness studio at the time, and so I was not involved in public schools. And I just wanted to, to reconnect to something that, that's just really important and exciting to me. I think I'm, I'm continuing, I, I'm seeking reelection for all of those same reasons. And also because I'm excited about the projects that I've gotten involved in in the last five years. So Nika's talked about our, the, the huge facilities improvement project that we have, the strategic plan that we developed for the district, which, which we didn't, we really didn't have before, before Nika's on my leadership. And that, I feel like that, it doesn't solve all of the problems of a school. It's not designed to do that. Administrators and teachers and, and staff are the people who, who do like the, the meaty work of public school. But the strategic plan gets us all on the same page. It kind of, it helps us all know what we're talking about. And so being able to continue that conversation with our community, with the people who work and, and learn in our schools, the families, is just, it's a very exciting proposition to me. I, I also, like, we've learned so much in the last year with the pandemic. Nika and I, as she said, we started leadership on the board in March of two thousand and twenty. So we've, we've spent a lot of time learning in the last eighteen months. And I think being able to, to put that learning to work for the good of the district and the community. I just, I want to be able to do that.
Thank you so much. We will now go to our next candidate, Elizabeth. You'll get the same question. Why did you decide to run for this position?
Well, I love this question because when my children started Fayetteville Public Schools fifteen years ago, because my mother was a school teacher, I had just a teeny tiny, what I call teacher speak. And so I knew some of the lingo and was able to engage with teachers in a way that made them feel seen and heard and supported. And from about that time on, I was asked by teachers to run for school board. And as I dove into the complexities of Fayetteville Public Schools, because ironically, when my kindergartner was starting, that first child was starting kindergarten, there was the talk of one or two high schools. Are we staying at that location? Are we moving? And I'm a pretty future-sighted person, and so even having a kindergartner, I started attending those meetings. And my school board representative at that time was Howard Hamilton way back in the day and started meeting with him and asking questions about the structure of our school district. It's very different from Roger Springdale and Bentonville. I know I didn't say that in the order that they are up and down forty-nine, but we are very different from those school districts and learning the ways, the ins and outs of board work just by meeting with different board members way back fifteen years ago. And because of having some And because of having some of those answers and being able to talk in parent groups about those things, parents also began to ask me if I would run for school board. And, you know, as we're coming to the end of our last one in high school, I just felt like now is the time. It absolutely has nothing to do with the criticisms of anything going on in the board currently. I think Megan has done a great job in these last five years. The board has gone through quite a bit. And there is some great work being done now with the, with the money, the bond restructure money. And, but I just feel like it's my, my time now with the experience that I've had within the district to bring that to the table and, and ask the community if they want me to serve in that way.
Thank you so much. And we'll stick with you for the next question, which is, describe your experience working with the community of Fayetteville. What is your leadership style?
Well, having owned a couple of small businesses and currently owning one, I work with all different kinds of people in the community. I talk with all different kinds of people in the community. I've been back in the salon since May sixth of twenty twenty. And you can imagine that that chair is a place where people feel comfortable to be themselves and share how they're feeling about things. So I've had all the range of clientele and customers and even emotional points of view. I have served in three different congregations within our community and just also different nonprofits and different organizations. I love this community. And even though my husband is a clergyman, I've asked him, please don't move us from Fayetteville. Let's stay here and be rooted here and raise our kids here because sometimes they tend to move around. My leadership style is one that brings all different kinds of people to the table. I don't know if I like a challenge or if I just love to be challenged, but I really like to have people around me that think differently from me and challenge my own views and my own beliefs. And so I love the variety and diversity of table and, and bringing groups together that I work with and lead that have different perspectives. And that's genuinely my favorite kind of groups to be a part of and to lead. I also love identifying leaders within groups that have specific giftings that I don't have and give, and different strengths. And I kind of like to push them forward because I also like to come back around to the back of any kind of organization that I'm in and serve with the people that are kind of doing the, the grind kind of work. And I like to make sure that we're not leaving anyone behind and missing any kind of perspective so that I can kind of move in and out of, of leadership and serving. And that is my, my leadership style.
Thank you so much. Megan, we'll now go to you for the same question. Describe your experience working with the community of Fayetteville. What is your leadership style?
Well, Elizabeth and I share the, the small business ownership experience, and I couldn't agree with her more that. And I think anybody who's owned a small business knows how much experience that gives you working with the Fayetteville community. You meet and get to know a ton of different people all about their varying perspectives across the community and their involvement in nonprofit efforts. Through clients at the studio, I, I was invited to contribute in small ways over the years to organizations like Potter's House and Ninety-Nine Balloons and the Spark Foundation. And I was also a part of the district's Framing Our Future effort where I served on the goal setting committee. The bulk of my volunteer work, though, as I said, has been my service on the Board of Education. It's exciting and meaningful. It really hits the spot for me. It's also extremely time consuming. There's a ton of training and a lot of workshops and meetings. And then there's also the service itself where I feel like my, my leadership style is the most, most evident. And I, I think that my leadership style is really grounded in intense engagement with anybody who calls or texts or emails me. It's important to me to be approachable and it's important to me to listen. The position that Elizabeth and I are running for is not a zoned position. As Nika said, anybody who's on the board is, is there to serve every single child who's sitting in, in, in seats in the district. You don't represent a zone as much as you, you try to best meet the needs of the whole district. But, but Elizabeth and I are running for an at-large position, which means like every school, every nook and cranny of the district. So listening is really important. I only live like one life in one zone. So, so, so meeting people and learning from them in other zones is really important. I think the other big feature of my leadership, my leadership style is asking questions persistently and engaging in hard conversations. I, I love a hard conversation. I feel, and I have them with my fellow board members, with district leadership and with community members. I feel like those conversations and being able to stay calm and open and curious. It's, it's talking about those tender areas where we really come together and fulfill the mission of public education where we, we bring out the best in our community. So I think, I think engaging with that is really, really vital to how I like to lead.
Thank you for that. And we will stick with you for this next question. What do you believe to be the largest challenge facing the district in the next two years?
I, I, I mean, I think it's clearly bouncing forward from COVID. It has to be at the top of our list. And I feel like from a board perspective, I mean, I think every single person that works or volunteers in our district is going to have new opportunities and challenges as a result of where we've been for the last eighteen months. I think from the board's perspective, figuring out how to use SR funds, which is the federal money that's directed to schools to help us navigate emerging from the pandemic is going to be, be our biggest role. DESI, which is the Department of Education, of Elementary and Secondary Education, has established four focused areas for the spending. Food security, and we've been really helped out with that by the federal government's extension of free lunch for every child, whether they qualify for free and reduced lunch or not. And then direct student support and continuous learning opportunities. So that stuff like, it's the social and emotional learning component. It's, I hate to say summer school. I don't know if that's the option that we'll pick, but I think that's the most obvious example of a continuous learning opportunity. Technology that enables flexible learning and then system-wide procedures that help the district respond to COVID and return successfully to in-person schooling. Because of the funds that were generated through that twenty twenty bond extension that we've talked about so much, we're fortunate to have a really substantial budget for facilities right now. So my preference is to focus on the bulk of those funds on direct student support and continuous learning opportunities, which is obviously a huge category. So I'm excited right now about opportunities to hire additional fully certified teachers to facilitate extra academic support that we'll be able to offer and to work with student support services to think through ways to work effectively with partners like Ozark Guidance and to think about strategically funding mental health services for kids who are uninsured or underinsured as we look to, to, to increasing mental health services. I think figuring out how to continue to deliver rigorous personalized education to kids while we deal with that social and emotional gap is something that is going to require experienced leadership and a real understanding of where we've been and where we want to go. Again, those facilities improvement projects are a huge hurdle. And I think understanding school funding and how different it is from a personal budget or a business budget, it's a complex web of federal funding, state funding and local funding. And much of that money is restricted, like you can't spend facility, the bond extension money on salaries. So really, really learning all of those details, it's very hard to hit the ground running as a new board member. And so I feel like taking everything that we've spent the last five years, six years, in, in some board members' cases, fifteen years, and leveraging that to really be able to do this return to school well, I think that's one of our, that's really our, our biggest hurdle.
Thank you. And we will now go to Elizabeth for the same question. What do you believe to be the largest challenge facing the district in the next two years?
Well, of course, you know, the pandemic is the main priority now for everyone. And we are hearing from parents across the district of the concerns that they have for their children coming out of this national crisis. And school boards are really going to be the game changer for how communities respond to this. It's, it's in the news every day how school boards are handling this. And so I feel like that I have the ear to the ground of a lot of parents and teachers and they're being able to be honest with me. You know, one of my concerns about getting on the school board is potentially not having that back and forth flow of conversation between parents and staff members within the district because that has been so precious to me all of these years. But I'm hoping to be able to maintain that level of trust between our, our current staff members as we do move forward. I think the pandemic is going to allow us some flexibility with things. I think state and local governments are going to have to give some room for creativity as schools try to figure out what are the best ways to take care of our children's emotional and mental health and their academic needs all at the same time. We have certain policies in place that say, you know, children in fourth grade all come together in the classroom in this way. And we may need to go to the state and ask for waivers to do things a little bit differently in the next couple of years, just to be able to recover academically, emotionally and mentally from what we've all been through. I think that technology has entered an incredibly interesting and complex situation into the equation for parents. I'm continuing on a daily basis to hear concerns from parents about the access to technology with their children in their homes and the best ways to protect them from that wide web of exposure. And although it's given us the opportunity to educate them from home, there have been some concerns. So I do feel like as we move forward in technology, we are going to have to answer some of that. Some of that for our parents and students moving forward, the best way to handle the vastness of technology. And I know that we have things in place and protections in place, but our students are very smart and they know how to navigate these things very well. And so those are, I feel like, and combined with the pandemic, we're going to need to figure out this whole technology issue with our parents.
Thank you. We will now go to the last question. I know it's five o'clock just now, but I hope you all bear, bear with me for the last question and closing statements. Where do you see the district after your term has ended? What are your personal goals?
Well, my mom always told me to leave something better than I found it. And so I would hope that at the end of a five-year term that the district would be better for knowing me and better for the service that I had given it. I have goals that, I mean, you know, we've all talked about how this can't really be personal. We have to really take into account the entire district and really set goals that provide the best for the entire district. And so I have goals of opening doors, more doors for alumni to feel like the Fayetteville Bulldogs is home that they're welcome to come back into and to use their experience and knowledge within the different schools and learning opportunities and understand that Fayetteville is what it is today because of the great alumni that have graduated from Fayetteville High School. Many of them are still here and in this community. I have goals of just, you know, like the, like Nika and Megan have said, a board work is very complicated. And we have to figure out ways to, I don't want to use the word transparency as if there's been some kind of non-transparency. We have to make a way for our parents and the community to feel like they understand what we're talking about and that it is engaging in a way that we have more participation. This, this election has brought about a lot of participation and a lot of questions. And we want to keep that engagement up as we go. And so I would hope more people want to run for school board at the end of my five terms. I hope there's more people engaged in our community. And, and that our, you know, our academics are up and that our emotional and mental health of our students are healthy. And we have more teachers in place and we have more support services in place at the end of my term.
Thank you so much. Megan, we'll now go to you for the last question. Where do you see the district after your term has ended? What are your personal goals?
Let's start with the personal goals. I feel like board service is weird because unlike a legislative position and other sort of elected, elected positions, there's no kind of like, this is how a bill becomes a law. Like I'm going to bring this initiative forward and I'm going to carry it through. It's just, it's, there's, there's no eye on board. And so I feel like my, my personal goals are to remain responsive to the, to the stakeholders in the district. I think Nika touched on this a little bit, but if board service has shown me anything, it's that like we have no idea what is around the corner. Over and over throughout these five years, like not just in the last eighteen months, but one hundred percent of the time surprises come up, situations arise. And so I feel like learning to, and continuing to listen and to, to build trust while, while following important rules around, you know, personnel confidentiality, for example, and things that are, that are tough for the, the community to, to understand. Sometimes I, I, I would hope to just maintain, maintain the relationships that I have inside the district and outside in order to, to be able to, to rise to the, to those occasions. In terms of at the, at the end of my term, I think places where we could grow and where it will take a sort of full board effort to grow is in our relationship with the city. We have tons of opportunities to collaborate with the city and, and a lot of institutional history in both, both city government and the board. And the same thing is true of the University of Arkansas, learning to work well with them on CTE, on concurrent classes. CTE is Career and Technical Education. So, so career preparedness, working with our workforce development people so that the, the CTE classes that we're providing are aligned to the needs of the workforce in Fayetteville. I hope we can do that. I think it's important to me to, to make sure that policies like our discipline policy really serve all kids and take into account that, that children are children, that in many ways, much like adults, they are still making mistakes. They're learning how to apologize. They're learning how to come back from those mistakes and repair relationships. And also that, that, that all kids are safe, that those discipline policies keep everybody safe at the same time as they keep everybody like emotionally safe and, and able to to be resilient and maintain relationships. I'm excited to continue our curriculum review cycle, which is we do departmentally and figuring out smart ways to both draw on teacher leadership and keep excellent teachers in the classroom all of the days of school. And, and you know, stay the course that we've established, high expectations and opportunities for all kids while we take care of their basic needs like food and connectedness. I think while we also need to maintain leadership that, that understands Fayetteville's unique community dynamics and priorities. So having staff and teachers that are respected as professionals and supported by the district and also paid for their work, I hope that, that we can maintain and continue to grow in that in the next five years.
Thank you. And we will stick with you for the closing statements. You'll have three minutes for your closing statement.
I don't think, I hope I don't need all, all three minutes. I, I'm really proud of where FPS is. As I said, whatever happens in the world winds up in the schools. And as a result, I feel like there are always new things to learn about each other, about solutions, about what, what different stakeholders can bring to the table. And I love that kind of learning. I love meeting people and bringing people together. And I, and I love, as I said, the difficult conversations. There, there are decisions to make and and I think helping people to kind of cope with not getting their way on some things and maintaining their connection to the district is, is a real goal that I have. And I think takes, takes tenacity and a willingness to talk to people who agree with you and don't agree with you, which I love to do. As I said, as Nika said, and as I've said, board service involves a ton of training and a ton of learning. There's like, if there's a big learning curve on board service and what we're able to do, hiring leadership, developing policies and, and setting goals and, and learning how to ask good questions and develop relationships in the district. I, I've worked really hard to do that, as I know every member of the current board has. And I hope that I can have the opportunity to continue to keep that ball rolling, particularly as we have this like very large COVID bump in the road to, to get past. So I hope that you'll come out, come out and vote between May eleventh and May eighteenth. Thanks so much for coming out tonight.
Thank you for your participation tonight. Really appreciate it. We'll now go to closing statements from Ms. Beasley.
Thank you, Taylor. Thank you to the chamber. And thank you to Megan for being such an awesome opponent. I wish these things didn't, did not have people running against one another because I am so appreciative of her last five years of service. And just thank you to the community for their engagement in this process. My three big talking points that I've been sharing with parents across this community that I feel they feel very strongly about are getting our schools open safely and with a high priority on mental and emotional health for our students and a high priority on academic success. Also for our teachers, getting the resources and the support services into their classrooms, assessing where students are is going to be a very big challenge for them this fall. And we're, we are going to have to support them in massive ways. And then also getting our community even more involved in our district and more in love with Fayetteville Public Schools and engaged in it in all different ways, from the elementary all the way to the graduation readiness process. I just want to thank everyone for participating in all of these discussions and all of these forums and continue to show up for these conversations and to come out and vote, May 11th through the 18th. I have a feeling that we're going to have the largest turnout for a school board election ever, probably in Fayetteville. And that, that makes me very happy and really excited. And I just thank you all for your time tonight.
Well, thank you so much to all of our candidates that participated tonight. We really appreciate you y'all taking the time out of your already busy schedules, out of your already busy campaign schedule to, to set some time aside and meet, meet with us here tonight. So once again, thank you all. And thank you to our sponsors, AT&amp;T, Black Hills Energy and Ozarks Electric. Doing a virtual forum is not easy and with their help, we've been able to make it, I hope, hopefully for the candidates, a smooth process. And so we've been able to get this technology in place to, to bring these to y'all. We'll continue to do so until we are able to safely host them in a hybrid model at the Fayetteville Public Library. So now that they've got the expansion open, we're looking forward to, to moving back home, as we would call it, to the Fayetteville Public Library. So once again, thank you to all of our candidates. The Fayetteville Chamber will be putting out some information on where to vote and when to vote. So be sure to keep an eye on that in your emails if you're on our email subscription. We look forward to seeing all of you out on voting day. So thank you again so much for everybody that joined us tonight. Hope you all stay safe.